Helena, I noticed that you came in as a guest, which means I had to let you in. You were in the lobby, which means you may not be able to use the chat function. You may want to leave and go back into the calendar. Otherwise, you won't be able to use the chat the whole meeting.
Okay, is that directed to me Andrea?
Yes, yes Helena.
Do I have everybody on? Okay, welcome to the regular board meeting of Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, May the 5th, 2020. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and will be posted later on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, be reminded to turn your microphone and camera on your devices off until you're recognized to speak. In order to be recognized to speak, please type "hand up" in the chat box. Once you've been recognized, please turn on your microphone and camera. Agenda item 1.1, Student Trustee Bambra, would you please lead us into the opening exercise?
Please join me in the sign of our faith. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Father God, we lift up all those who are facing illness today. We ask that you would bring healing, comfort, and peace to their bodies, calm their fears, and let them experience the healing power of your love. In Jesus's name, amen.
I affirm that I would be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, Queen of Canada, her heirs, successors, and that I will faithfully observe the laws of Canada and fulfill my duties as a Canadian citizen. There were no motions adopted in camera. Information received in camera, none. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a notice of motion.
Yes, go ahead.
The title of the notice of motion would be "Bylaw Review Committee."
That'll be... Where do you wish to put that?
Mr. Chair, I think it comes under the information item.
Yes. Bylaw review. 10.5. Are there any other notions, notices of motion?
I'm requesting that we add an action item to tonight's agenda that has to do with a donation from Halton Food for Thought to our board. And because of the size of the donation, it needs to come before the trustees.
So do you wish that to be an action item?
Yes, please.
I will motion to add that to the agenda.
All right. So if we... Can I have a second there? Trustee Agnew, all in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Okay, so none opposed, I will call that unanimous. So we will add it to action items. 8.1.
Mr. Chair, I didn't vote.
Trustee De Rosa, I said if there are no objections, then I would take that to be unanimous. If you want to vote, go ahead. You have the floor, vote.
That's okay, I didn't hear that clarification. I would strongly suggest that that is a practice that we would not want to, really want to continue. Anyways, that's fine.
Okay. So we're adding Agenda Item 8.1, Halton Food for Thought Donation. Are there any declarations of conflict this evening? There are none. There's no presentations, there are no delegations. Agenda Item 6, Approval of the March 31st, 2020 Regular Board Meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seen none. Do I have unanimous vote to approve them as they read?
In favor.
Would you like me to call a vote, a recorded vote? Yes, please. Can I have a mover?
I'll move.
Moved by Trustee O'Hern Zernota, seconded by?
I'll second it.
By Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
In favor.
Trustee Bambra.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Dort.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Caratell. Trustee Caratell. Trustee Swan.
In favor.
In favor, sorry, better chat.
Trustee De Rosa.
In favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi, against. Agenda item are minutes of April 21st, 2020 Regular Board Meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seen none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as recorded?
I'll move.
Moved by Trustee O'Hern Zernota, seconded.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Agnew. I will take a roll vote on this one as well. Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
In favor.
Trustee Bambra.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Dort.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Caratell.
In favor.
Trustee Swan.
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa.
In favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi, in favor. All right, Agenda Item 6.3, Minutes of the April 30th Special Board Meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seen none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as read or as written?
I'll move it.
Moved by Trustee O'Brien. Seconded by?
Marvin.
Trustee Dort. I will take a roll vote on that as well. Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
In favor.
Trustee Bambra.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Dort.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Caratell.
In favor.
Trustee Swan.
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa.
In favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi, in favor. Moving on to Agenda Item Business arising from the previous meeting. Summary of outstanding items from previous meetings are there for your information. Moving on to Action Items, Agenda 8.1, Halton Food for Thought Donation. Director Daley, can you please speak to the matter?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this report as per operating policy I-21, Corporate and Community Investment in Education, is to seek board approval for donation in the value of $20,000 to the Halton Catholic District School Board. Halton Food for Thought is a longtime partner with our board, has donated $20,000 in gift cards to be distributed to families and our board have been financially impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Family of school superintendents will work within their respective schools to identify families who would benefit from this donation. Cards will be delivered to families in need throughout the board, and if this motion is approved, we can get started on it this week. So the following recommendation is presented for the consideration of the board. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the donation of $20,000 gift cards from Halton Food for Thought to be distributed to families in need throughout the board.
Is there any questions?
I'll move it, Chair Ian Tomasi.
Yes, sorry. Do I have a mover? Trustee Guzzo, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota, are there any questions? Trustee Agnew.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And not a question about this donation at all. I mean, this is amazing. I'm very grateful, and I think a lot of families will benefit. So this is pretty fantastic. I'm just curious how the decision is made as to which families will receive these cards? How does that process look?
To you, Secretary Daley.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to call upon Superintendent Ballow just to discuss the process that we're hoping to go through in order to identify families.
Hi, everyone, and through you, Mr. Chair. We are working as a team of family of school superintendents with our school principals. They in turn are reaching out to their staff. We've already been able to support a number of families. Our schools do a really good job of reaching out to the community. They've communicated in a number of ways. They provide all of the contact information for Food for Life, which is a partnership at this time between Food for Life, Halton Food for Thought, and Food for Kids Halton. So they have a pretty good sense of the needs in their communities. And at this time, we're reaching out again to our principals, who again reach out to their staff for recommendations because they communicate often with their families to see who else or who needs further support. And then that information will make its way to the family of school superintendents, and then we'll disperse the funds accordingly between each of our schools. And then myself and Superintendent Merrick have been collaborating quite a bit in the work that we've been doing with Halton Food for Thought between organizing our schools in terms of the needs. And he's also been supporting with the facility team to help with some of those deliveries that are helping Food for Life, which is the overarching partnership, get those donations to people's homes. So in the case of these gift cards, we will be making deliveries.
Superintendent Ballow, Trustee Carabella?
Can I just, sorry, can I just have a follow-up?
Mr. Chair. My apologies.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Ballow. And again, I think this is amazing. And I'm just wondering, I know that typically, you know, our administrators and our staff, you know, usually have identified the families that we see, you know, needing these forms of support. I'm just wondering, you know, I'm wondering if there might be some new families that may be affected by everything that's happening right now? And if so, do they have to self-identify? Or again, would principals or teachers have an idea of who might be struggling, given what's going on with COVID-19?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's a really valid point. And for that reason, we've made the information public as to who to contact so that if there is a family who we haven't identified who are in need, they've got the number and they can make that direct contact with Food for Life, who's the intake contact. And it also, you know, preserves people's privacy, and we want to be really respectful of that. So if we can remove ourselves and give them the contact information to make it happen, we're all for that.
That's amazing, thank you so much.
And I would just add that on our board's site, where we've updated all of the COVID-19 information, we've also included where families can go to get food in Halton. There's a whole resource page that we continually update so families, all families have access to that information.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. I had similar questions. I appreciate how the process is explained, and it's wonderful, really wonderful. And wanted to express my thanks as well, and the board for this help for our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella.
Okay, then I will take this matter to a vote. Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
Absolutely in favor.
Trustee Bambra.
In favor.
Trustee Dort.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Caratell. Trustee Swan.
Definitely in favor.
Trustee De Rosa.
In favor.
I'm also in favor. Okay, Staff Reports, Agenda Item 9.1, HCDSP Participation in Math and Science Events. Superintendent Pocassin, can you speak to this matter?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. This staff report is in response to a motion that was brought forth March 31st regarding Math and Science Extracurricular Engagement, Past and Present Initiatives, and Future Opportunities. The first portion of this motion has been addressed through a collaboration between Curriculum Services and Research and Development, where we conducted a data collection with an online Microsoft form, soliciting a series of questions and contributions from our schools. And we're very impressed with the participation rate. We had 49 schools. 91% of our elementary and 80% of secondary participate. So the overall response rate was 89.1%. And the overall percentage, 98% reported involvement in at least one local event related to science, technology, engineering, or math, and 76% in at least one regional event. 60% of all students in the participating schools registered participation in STEM events, clubs, or teams, more secondary than elementary, 77% to 50%. And the main reasons why students may not participate are also provided and listed, and the top four reasons being time constraints, events not being scheduled this year, not enough staff involvement, and lack of student interest. So I submit this report for your consideration, and our conclusions and summaries are provided within the report. And I welcome your questions or comments. Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Trustee Dort, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to do a few extra minutes. I'll stay within my five minutes, but I have a few comments on this report, which I'd like to take. First of all, I want to thank Superintendent Pocassin for collecting this information. However, I have a few, several comments here and a couple of questions. So if somebody could write down the questions and maybe give me an answer at some point in time, that'll be great. First of all, looking at the report, there are two parts to the motion, and the motion is very, very specific and very clear about what should be provided. It says a detailed report outlining the current co-curricular and extracurricular events being conducted in elementary and secondary in math and science. The report should include the level of student participation in local, regional, university, national, and international competition. That's what the first part of the motion says. So to that extent, we have sent a memo to the schools, and I believe this memo was not mandatory, it was optional. And we had 90% participation in elementary, 80% in secondary. So my first question would be, was this a mandatory thing? Or was this an optional choice for the schools to send? Basically, it's a report, it should have been more concise. Somebody should have taken the time to follow up and find out why we did not get information from this. This pertains to the whole board, it's not a student survey, or it's not a parent survey. This is something that was important. So that would be my first question there. There's some good collection of data, some potential reasons why students may not be participating, some good questions there. I would like one paragraph to explain, and it says the selected, just before results, the selected event category and STEM themes were reviewed by an independent coder from Research and Development Services, who checked 30% of all open-ended responses and local level, and 50% of responses at regional university level, till 100% was reached. So sometime in time, could somebody explain to me that paragraph? So going further, we come to some nice, wonderful charts and some nice, wonderful tables. My question would be, where are these numbers coming from? The percentage of students participating? Because in the results at the bottom, we have not provided the number of students. We just provided comments. So my third question would be, where are these comments, these numbers coming from? The fourth question would be, we talk about an event. Okay, so the numbers talk about an event. So what is an event? And how have the... How is the count being made based on an event? Is the event a number of times, the words "STEM" appear in the questionnaire, in the answers? So that would be my question. So if, another thing is, as we go down to the comments, we see items like guest speakers. We see about Ripley's, we talk about food and nutrition, talk about chess, we talk about career days, all these events. Should that be part of math and science, that's the STEM report that we have? So that's my fourth question. So how have you used that data? Has that data gone into preparation of this report? So again, I did talk to the secretary and explain the expectations. Basically, what we are talking about are events like STEM programs, after-class programs, competitions between schools, competition between regions, competitions like the Bay Area Science Fair. I looked through the comment section and the feedback section, and I was very disappointed to see answers to questions like, "Oh, we have not performed anything this year because of COVID," or "because of the teacher's strike." That is not expected in a response because that has happened just recently, in the past two months. But we are talking about the past year and this year. So I'm really disappointed to see those kind of answers here. We have, we are doing some really good stuff, really good programs, really good competitions in math and science, but some schools are not doing it at all. So looking at this report, it straight away comes to you that there's inequity in our system. In this inequality and inequity, in the sense that some schools provide students opportunities, and some do not provide opportunities. If I look at my own children, and they go to school which does not have these opportunities, I'd be rather disappointed. So again, I did look through the report in detail. There's some schools having programs for special needs kids, and that's excellent. So I'm not sure how they manage the program for special needs, but they are doing a good job. Others do not have, again, another point of inequity. Sharing of, there was a comment that schools, in the same family of schools, are not sharing information, not sharing resources and information. So I'd like that to be addressed in future. What I'd really like to see is the, having a kind of a math and science, a kind of a STEAM fair for Halton Catholic District School Board, as it is, as the whole board is concerned, and then participating in events like Bay Area Science Fair, and so on. I was really disappointed to see only three mentions of the name Bay Area Science Fair in our whole board. We have such a wonderful area science fair, where we should have been participating more. And I'd like to draw, finally, I'd like to draw everybody to the attention of that email, which I did send out before the meeting, and it's for the public board, and it's the ICE STEM program. So the very fact that they have the ICE STEM program in full swing in the Burlington School, I think it's Burlington Aldershot, and Milton number, the new high school in Milton is going to be an ICE STEM program school. So how did we get to that point? We get to that point by promoting math, science in elementary school, and then the kids move on and understand the beauty of math and science, and then they move on to high school. I have a few questions there, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the time. I hope somebody has recorded the questions and provides me some answers, and to all of us. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions? Trustee O'Brien. Okay, thank you through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, sorry, I have asked a few questions. Can I have some responses, please?
Yes, sorry. So, and our Superintendent Pocassin, can you address these questions, please?
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you for your questions, Trustee Dort. I actually have recorded all of your questions to the best of my ability. I don't know how many I can answer right away this evening to the extent that we do have to investigate from our end. There are also some questions that are specific to research and development, and I don't know if Dr. Collamore has joined us this evening. So I am pleased to follow up and verify your questions through... So I am pleased to follow up and verify your questions through Rosie, to ensure that I have them all correctly, and I hope to respond to you in due course, if that's acceptable to you.
Absolutely. Very much acceptable. And I like to give trustees the time to digest all this part two. I think trustee Zanotta wanted some more information. This is a very exciting topic to me, and I'm sure trustees will be excited with this and the opportunities presented, so for sure. And I think we are going to proceed with the part two of this motion, and I think we'll have, all will have a lot of time. Thank you so much.
Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
I have a question.
Thanks, Trustee O'Brien.
Yeah, go ahead, Trustee Ryan.
My apologies. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
I forgive you, Chair Intomasi. Thank you to Mr. Chair. To, I guess, Dr. Collamore, how many schools participated in a science fair this past year?
Through you, Doc, through you, Mr. Chair.
Collamore, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I am going to ask Jen McDonald to answer this one.
Hi there. I don't think we have an exact number right now of science fair events. We did break things down by different levels, and I believe at the local level, there was only one mention of a science fair. But as trustee Duarte said, there wasn't mention of the Bay Area Science Fairs. I think he said there was about three. So I would have to double check on that exact figure, but it, there wasn't very many, in other words.
Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up?
No.
Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I just had a question about, and I know that trustee Duarte touched on some of this, but I just had a question around some of the activities that were listed, and just wondering sort of how they loop in and what their relevance is. So a couple of things. So, you know, one question around something like the math-science program. You know, I know that that's a paid-by-parent program, so, you know, not every child would have equal access to a program like that if they don't have the funds to participate, or, you know, in a situation where, you know, we may have a special needs student that perhaps needs some extra assistance. So, you know, to me, that would maybe be a program that wouldn't be on a level playing field. But then I looked at other ones like, you know, the Humane Society, and there was just a few there that I was just looking for some clarification as to how they actually fit in with the programs that I think we were looking at.
Who is that question directed at? Superintendent Porcasen?
Sure.
Superintendent Porcasen?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I really would have to, I guess, further investigate as to how that would be connected. I do understand that there was a breadth of responses that were tied into technology, math, science, and engineering. So it was not strictly math and science. And so when our administrators were completing the survey, they may have been looking at a particular interpretation of an event that they participated in as a school community. But certainly, I can provide clarification to that question as well at a later date, once I have it myself.
Thank you. That would be great, just to understand.
Trustee Agnew?
Yep. So just thank you, Superintendent Porcasen. So just to, because maybe I'm missing something. So, you know, some of them certainly made, you know, direct correlation made sense, and then there were some that I saw that I couldn't find the correlation. And so it may just be helpful if they're listed there to determine, you know, maybe I'm missing, you know, maybe we're missing something that there is a great opportunity in some of the opportunities that have been listed that wouldn't traditionally fit in what we consider to be a math and science program. So that would be helpful. Thank you.
Any response to that from staff? No. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry about that. We good? Is that better now?
Yes.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just looking at, trustee Agnew touched on some of the questions I was going to ask in regards to Appendix A, but one of the questions I do have around Appendix A is, as you go through, you kind of notice that there's some disparity between some of the, some of the schools and what they've listed. And I think some of them maybe felt that they needed to include some of these initiatives to make it look like they have more. And then you go to Appendix F, and you see, in your opinion, what are the main reasons why students may not have participated in math or science events? And one of them is a small school, staff, and COVID. Job action impacted some activities, i.e. strikes on scheduled days, COVID, COVID, work-to-rule, provincial and global issues, job action impacted some activities, i.e. stripes. So let's put that aside, and let's focus on the small school piece, or, you know, I think one of them was, information didn't trickle to itinerant teams, they're not sharing events with teachers. How do we ensure that if we were to go down the road with an initiative, that we create some equity, in the sense of what's happening at one school? And we know that not every teacher has the same strengths, so that doesn't mean that you're going to end up with the same program running at one school as at the next. But there should be some consistency in the sense that if there's programs offered, they should be offered as much as possible. How do you suggest that if we were to move forward with something like this, how would we address that? What would, what would that look like? Because that is one of my concerns, is the inequity from school to school.
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, certainly, trustee Guzzo, if we're relying on extracurricular clubs and activities to fill this particular need, then it is going to vary from school to school. There's no doubt about that, because it does rely on both the desire and availability of staff and/or parents to help volunteer and to run those clubs or activities. So when we talk about initiatives, that's really a bit of the stumbling block with extracurricular initiatives. If we truly, as a board, think that STEM-related fields are something that are really important for all of our students, then it really should be addressed in the regular classroom curriculum, which it is. I mean, science, math, engineering, coding, all of those things are covered in the Ontario curriculum. But if we're looking at kind of something extra for students that have an additional interest in it, it is difficult to do and challenging, as you've noted, at smaller schools, because you might not have the availability of staff. So what are some things that we could maybe propose in a Part B to the motion? It might be where a number of schools join together in a club, if that could help. Or, again, I know a number of our high schools do a great outreach with their feeder schools with regards to STEM activities. Again, when we're relying on volunteer extracurricular initiatives, we are really relying on volunteer.
Is there a follow-up?
Yes, there is. Thank you, trustee Chair Intomasi. So then, if I look at this then from that lens, in an extracurricular versus what is being done during school time, then this list would look very different. Like, I've got one here where we've got National Sweater Day is included in here, or Big Crunch, Waste Reduction Week. Those are all school initiatives that are kind of themed, and I guess they can be related somehow back to STEM. But if we were to look at this, what would it look like in the sense of initiative versus extracurricular?
Well, I guess I'm not sure what initiative, what that really means. And in terms of things like Big Crunch, or recycling, or some of those things, I think issues around ecology, around the environment, you could certainly make an argument that they are STEM-related. If National Sweater Day is wearing a sweater, turning down the thermostat to recognize energy conservation, again, I guess that's maybe why a school would offer that. It really comes down to, again, when we're talking about what we believe is important for our students, if we believe it's important for all students across the system, that's one thing. It really needs to be embedded into the regular program. If we believe it's important for some students who may show a certain affinity for math and science and technology, or the arts, or other areas that they might want to be interested in participating in an extracurricular sort of sense, then that's a bit of a different approach, I think.
Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. So to build on what Director Daly has mentioned, you know, when we think of STEM from the outside looking in, we're thinking of a program, something that is formalized, something that is cohesive. But the reality is, is we have that balancing act between what is currently curriculum and what is extracurricular. Maybe five years or 10 years down the road, this will be more, a more cohesive strategy from the Minister of Education. To me, it's without a person or a champion driving the program to make sure that it is cohesive and equitable, is where the challenge lies for us right now. So playing devil's advocate, Director Daly, if we were to look at having a more cohesive STEM strategy and having a champion that's in charge of that, and who develops a more cohesive program and implements that program throughout the board, what would that look like? How would we go about doing that?
Secretary Daly?
Well, again, it really depends on what you mean by a court, somebody to coordinate it, or to kind of suss out those champions. There's a couple of ways you could do it. You could do it on an extracurricular model, where you encourage teachers, you bring them together. If you wanted it to be a bit of a hybrid between getting into the classroom and outside of the classroom, it might require direction from a permanent teacher who would work as an itinerant, or work with numbers of schools. That would typically, if we wanted for something to take hold in a curriculum way, we'd probably want some specialty at a larger level or a higher level in order to help build capacity at the school level.
Do you have a follow-up?
Trustee Murphy?
No, just a comment to my fellow trustees. If we view this as something important, I think we need to put our heads together and provide some direction to the staff and do more research. I would like to see our board to be known as one of the premier spots for STEM. But that's a bigger, longer-term strategy and a bigger play, now that we're in our long-term capital planning, or about to start that. Maybe that's something we can incorporate in.
Thank you for your comment. Trustee Swan, student trustee Swan, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I kind of just want to provide a comment seemingly because I had participated in science fairs when I was in grade eight, in grade nine, and seemingly there's a lot of mentions of the science fair. It is definitely, I guess, a challenge, just like, I would say, it is definitely a challenge organizing in the school level, just because when I remember doing this, it was a lot of, a lot of time was spent actually developing my projects. There were a lot of, there were a lot of instances where, you know, like, school got in the way. And typically, teachers weren't available to, weren't available to run these things. And because the science fair is quite independent outside of the school and the board, it's not really necessarily something that teachers would hop on right away, especially because of the time that's needed. So I do agree with trustee Murphy in the fact that, you know, there, if we're really interested in trying to make STEM kind of the pinnacle of the board, and we really need to focus on, you know, making, making sure that we have a strategy, that we can kind of, I guess, place somebody, somebody in each school that's actually, that can champion these kinds of initiatives, because it is a lot of time organizing them. It's a lot of time actually encouraging students to, you know, pursue their own pathways and become independent. And I think that was kind of the, a lot of what science fair evolved around.
Who wants to tackle that? Director Daly? Is there a follow-up question to your statement?
Sorry, that was just a comment about that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, I've taken up my time, but if trustee Zanotta is after me, would like to speak before me, then I can wait back.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Trustee O'Hearn's Zanotta then, and then come back to you?
I'm okay.
To wrap it up?
No, I'm fine. Okay, you want trustee Duarte to wrap it up? Okay, a couple of questions. First of all, thank you, superintendent, through you, Mr. Chair Porcasen, and your staff for creating this report. I know these type of reports take a lot of time and effort, so I appreciate it. Of note, 50% in this report shows that people do not have the time to participate in these activities, so I think we need to keep that in mind. And I offer up to my fellow trustees and the staff to think about, was last year the proper year to really go out and get statistics? We've had a very strange year, as we all know. We've had work-to-rules, we've had some issues past year. So I'm just questioning, is this data really good to use as a lightning rod to make decisions moving forward? And if 50% of our folks do not want to attend STEM, we're only working with 50% of that data. So how do we move forward?
I can answer that, Mr. Chair.
Do we have any staff members that wish to address that?
Yeah, first comment. I don't know if there's a question. If there's a question, I'll answer the question.
My question would be to clarify, do we believe, and maybe to superintendent Porcasen, through you, Director Daly, do you believe this data is fulsome enough to help us to make decisions, having said that 50% of our families do not want to participate?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think it's a, it's a, noted that it's maybe a difficult year to judge, but I think, I think, and maybe this is maybe to trustee Duarte's point, if you make something exciting and interesting enough, students will decide to spend their time on it. So while we all have a finite amount of time, especially when it comes to student participation in extracurricular events, why they might choose one over another, if there's a champion for it, and if it's really a dynamic process, and it's something that students enjoy and are challenged by, then they probably would select those sorts of events. So I don't know if that answers the question, but that might be kind of my take on it.
All right. Superintendent Porcasen, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, I forgot me.
No. So superintendent Porcasen wishes to address?
Okay, okay.
First, thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for your comments. Trustee Zanotta, I just wanted to state that I think that hearing about what the goals are, there is a mix of extracurricular and in-school best practices that we certainly have to look at, the family of schools, collaborations that do exist in our system at Notre Dame and JV in particular, and the champion teachers that we have at those schools are great. I respectfully don't know how, you know, how feasible it would be to have a champion assigned to every school, and how that would work. I think there is an extracurricular component that we can't judge. We do, as a curriculum department, of course, advertise through memos that are documented, all of the science fairs, and all of the opportunities for students to participate in math and science activities, either during the school day or after the school day. And it is, of course, disseminated to staff accordingly, and the participation rates often are not what we would like them to be. So I am certainly fully in agreement that as a curriculum department, we would want to promote STEM, or STEAM, or any variation to that effect that would promote science, that would promote science, technology, engineering, mathematics, the arts, and every area of curriculum that we can integrate. That is definitely a huge curriculum goal to have integration in all those subject areas that anything that we can do to promote it is something that we would strive to do. So my recommendations are to, in part B of the motion, are to collaborate and look forward to best practices. And I certainly think that having an itinerant that is focused on promoting STEM or STEAM activities would be something that would be highly attractive to the department and to the system and to our students and teachers. I do, again, caution everyone to understand the entire notion of extracurricular. And I know it's wonderful to have motivating, enthusiastic teachers, and we certainly do. I've had the pleasure of being in conversation with one of them just within the last day. However, I do think that it is something that is highly dependent on the individual school, the individual person, student interest, and anything we can do to promote that and make it happen. We are certainly willing to work together and collaborate with anyone concerned. So thanks for your input, certainly valued, and something that we look forward to responding to in part B of the motion.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Dwork?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you Superintendent Porcasen. And just to answer quickly, Trustees are not, this data was for the past year. This year, we had a terrible year, but there's a lot of data from the past year which could be helpful to work on this. And coming back to Superintendent Porcasen, the part two of this motion is subject to today's report, a report of plan to be presented to the board. So I would like to request and find out when we are going to satisfy that part of the motion. If you could throw some light on that.
Superintendent Porcasen or Director Daly, did you wish to address this? So the question is, the second part of the motion, when will it be addressed? Superintendent Porcasen, did you want to answer that?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Respectfully, as we prepare right now in May for reporting in June, I would think that we could probably get something together for the first board meeting in June, if that's acceptable to the group.
Is that acceptable, Trustee Dwork, since it's your motion?
Yes, I would like to see if, I'm okay with that, but what about other trustees? Are they okay with that too?
Anybody else wishes to speak to this?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Thank you. So the first meeting is June. And Mr. Chair, just a quick, really quick question to Superintendent Porcasen.
So Trustee Dwork, how's June the 2nd?
That looks?
Able to address the second portion of your question?
I think sounds good. Trustees will get enough time to do their research and, you know, collect information, ask questions, and I think it should be good.
June the 2nd it is?
Sounds good.
So are you finished or do you have?
Just a quick question to Superintendent Porcasen. Superintendent, have you looked at the ISTEM program in the public board? And is it something which would line up with what we are talking about right now? I'm not talking about the program as such. The activity is done in that program. Would you have any information on that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we can certainly include that information in our report, but right at this time, we have not been exploring participation in that program at our secondary schools at this time. But it doesn't mean that we wouldn't be looking at it and considering it in the future.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item 9.2, update to the boardroom technology. We'll be receiving a report from Secretary Daly and Superintendent of Financial Services Lofts. Who wants to go first? Superintendent of Financial Services Lofts, go ahead.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, everyone, due to COVID-19, we've been unable to secure the three quotes for the boardroom. We have one, but we are unable to get the other two. Staff will appreciate the opportunity to bring a fulsome report back to the board when the business community has returned to a normal operation and quotes can be secured. Staff are requesting that this item be added to the business arise of previous meeting chart and addressed at a future meeting.
Secretary Daly, do you wish to add to that? All right, then I have a question from Vice Chair Dwork. Vice Chair Dwork, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, through Superintendent Lofts. Thank you for coming back to us and letting us know. We have been, quite frankly, at this since December. We had enough time, but since you especially requested that, and you're a good guy, so I'm okay with moving it to the next meeting. But next meeting is two weeks from now. I think it should be possible to get the quotes. I would caution delaying beyond that. We have had enough of time. The business is up and running as far as quotations are concerned, and I don't think we should delay that beyond the next board meeting. I would also like to have the SPACs as early as possible so that the trustees could, we all could take a look at it and kind of have our questions ready for the next board meeting. Thank you.
Anybody want to address that or no? All right, then we'll move on to Trustee Guzzo. You have the floor?
Thank you through you, Chair Tomasi. I'm just wondering if business arising is the appropriate place for it to be as it was a motion and that there was a report required back on it, that it should maybe stay in unfinished business? Or go to the meeting? We put it back onto the meeting when we're able to get the information?
Unfinished business and we'll deal with it on a meeting-to-meeting basis to see how and if COVID-19 still affects us getting those quotations. All right, is there any more questions? Oh, yes, there is. So Trustee O'Herns or Nota?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent Lofts, I fully appreciate what you're having to say. As health and safety is of utmost importance during COVID-19, the least amount of people that you need to have around your in-b buildings is of the utmost importance, so that should supersede our needs at this time.
Thank you for your comments, Trustee O'Herns or Nota. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I want to just, it's an opinion. I really think this should go into unfinished business. That's really important. Just to remind us that it's there. Thank you.
Yes, your point's well taken. Trustee Guzzo's already mentioned that, so that's exactly what's going to happen. So are there any other questions? Seeing none, we're going to move into information items. Agenda Item 10.1, Student Trustee Bambra, can you please provide the board with your update?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So with achieving, as AUSTA ECO's French Relations Working Group Co-Chair, Trustee Swan participated in a video call on April 23rd, 2020 with Minister of Education Stephen Leche, the Executive Council, and the Indigenous Working Group Co-Chairs of the Ontario Student Trustee Association to discuss about school closures, maintaining fair student assessment, and equitable support for ESL students, and thus with an individual education plan. The ministry will also be collaborating with AUSTA ECO in terms of developing their distance learning program for the summer that they announced this month. Trustee Swan will be participating in the follow-up calls with the minister as the school year comes to a close. As well, Trustee Swan, along with AUSTA ECO President Sally Mesoret, was interviewed by the Toronto Star and appeared on an article April 17th, 2020 called "Grade 12 Worries Grades, Grad's Post-Secondary Plans", speaking about the concerns that graduating students have amid the school closures and cancellations of many end-year events due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This past Tuesday, the 28th, myself, I hosted a live stream for all HCSB secondary students about the COVID-19 school closures, where they could ask unconfirmed questions and concerns. Some of the concerns brought up included marking, especially if test work done during distance learning would be graded, additional exams, and culminating tasks, whether exams run as normal, be replaced by culminating activities, or another option. On April 30th, I, alongside a Toronto District School Board trustee, appeared on CBC Radio's One interview discussing the impacts of COVID-19 on students as well as how it's affecting post-secondary plans for graduating students. And as well, Trustee Bambra, which is myself, was also featured in the Inside Halton editorial about COVID-19 and its effects on student mental health in regards to the school closures.
Are there any?
For the next portion? Sorry.
So I'm going?
Will you continue?
Trustee Bambra, so do you have a continuation up to that report? Otherwise, I was going to, I was going to fill the questions first of Student Trustee Bambra, and then I was going to move on to your report. Are there any questions? Well, continue, Trustee Carrotel.
Thank you. Under the believing portion of the report? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under the believing portion of this report, the Catholic Board Council of AUSTA ECO was planning an advocacy with Cardinal Collins of the Archdiocese of Toronto, considering this as this week marks Catholic Education Week. CBC Cabinet members, myself and Mr. Swan are going to participate the same day tomorrow. They'll be in on his perspective on current pandemic and how we can work from it. Furthermore, the Catholic Board Cabinet is creating?
So we're having Student Trustee, we're having difficulty hearing you. You're breaking up. Is there anything that you have turned on that you can turn off to see if we don't better transmission? So I'm going to move on to Delix. Go ahead, Trustee.
Yeah, so for belonging, so on April 29th, Trustee Carrotel, he attended the Online School Name Selection Committee meeting, which consisted of trustees, parents, teachers, and students. That was chaired by the Superintendent of Education Jeff Corral. As well, Burlington Student Senators and I have finished working on a report, which will be presented after this report, called Transit Feedback Among Halton Catholic District School Board Burlington Secondary Students. And I think I'll just provide more information as I get to that item. So I'll be happy to accept any questions.
I didn't hear you.
Yeah, so we're having transmission difficulty? Devin, we cannot hear you. Still. So do we want to move on to? Are there any questions from trustees, from the students? Can you continue on with the Agenda Item 10.11? Transit feedback amongst Halton Catholic District School Board Burlington Secondary students?
Okay, for sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So first of all, I just want to thank a couple of people, actually. Particularly Lisa Collamore, who's the Chief Research Officer, and Jennifer McDonald, who is also another research officer at the Halton Catholic District School Board. They've been very instrumental helping me with the analysis and also the writing of the report. And our 30 student senators from Burlington who have helped with distributing the survey as well as providing their input on some of the recommendations that are mentioned. So this report will summarize the survey, the data collecting exercise that was collected during the month of December. All of the data was analyzed throughout February, March, towards over 150 graphs made in total. And so we asked our student senators to provide input to some of the recommendations in April. And so really to summarize it down, we wanted to really understand how students are currently using transit, given that in the November, at the November special board meeting, we had approved the free transit proposal that Marion Marion Mead Ward had previously proposed in, I think, July. And the memorandum of understanding, we hope to see being voted on next month so that the program can commence in September 2020. All in all, we had around 1,064 students who were surveyed. This gives a response rate of 1 in 3 students in our Burlington Secondary Schools. I will note a couple of things. First of all, Notre Dame is underrepresented in this survey, and so whereas students from Corpus Christi in assumption will be overrepresented. And further on to that, we had grade 9, 10, 11 students who are overrepresented and grade 12 students who are underrepresented in this survey. We also didn't survey students coming in from the Halton District School Board, the public board that serves our region. Mainly, one, because of logistics, and two, we didn't have the jurisdiction to present the survey in that, in those secondary schools. In order to better analyze the students' responses, we separated the students into three different cohorts. Non-writers, infrequent writers, and frequent writers. So if you kind of look at the report, you'll see that, how we kind of divided this up. The students who were considered non-writers were the students who answered no to the question, "Have you ever taken a city bus before?" Those who were considered infrequent writers were the students who answered that they have either never taken the buses, never taken the bus in the last month, or only once or twice. And lastly, those who were considered frequent writers were students who answered that they have taken the bus at least once, at least once, one day in a week. So we did look at some of the main results from each cohort, and I will summarize it because there's just a lot to unpack here. There are already reasons that are shared among at least two of the cohorts as to why students do not want to take transit. And particularly, speaking with the fact that buses are too expensive, the bus schedules and routes are just too confusing. And then in two of the three cohorts, we see that students are relying more on other forms of transportation. And I think that speaks a lot to a couple of things. First of all, we know that in Burlington that writers are supposed to pay $3.50 in cash, or if they're a press card user, the cost is $1.85. And even that, that's still too expensive for our students, especially if they're not working. And further on to that, we see that the bus routes and schedules students are finding are too confusing. I believe the last time that Burlington Transit had changed the bus schedules and routes was in November, and the survey was hosted in December. So it kind of gave you, it kind of gives you a little bit more insight in terms of the fact that these changes are hard for students to adjust to. And another key issue that we found was that students who weren't using city buses currently or only sparingly, they tended to use other forms of transportation. I think this really comes down to the point that transit is relatively limited. The places to which you can actually access are only available near the places where the buses stop and any other places you either need to walk or drive. So I think that going forward to this, I think that it does say a lot with how students may find other forms of transportation more reliable. And that might also suggest that more marketing might need to be implemented with this proposal. Furthermore, we asked current writers why they might like taking the city buses. And so there were four key reasons. First of all, students can't drive. Either they don't have their license or they don't have their own car to go with. Second of all, they can avoid unfavorable conditions, whether it's rain, whether it's snow, whether it's too hot or it's too cold. You know, they want to be able to, you know, avoid those conditions altogether. Third of all, bus stops are just easily accessible. A lot of our students will tend to live close to a bus stop if there's high enough ridership there. And of course, the fourth reason is a feeling of independence. They want to have that kind of freedom to explore and to really travel on their own. As well, we kind of asked infrequent and frequent writers where they would usually go when taking city buses. And so when we kind of looked at the current writers, we saw that 57% of students actually would go home. 51% of students would actually go to commercial areas. 47% of students go to public areas, and 40% of students actually go to school through the city buses. And that actually says a lot because it means that city buses are more widely used than just going to and from school. And I think that what also says is that there could be a better focus in terms of actually encouraging students to explore the city of Burlington. You know, it's not just a way for you to get to and from school. It's a way for you to invest in the city, visit small businesses, go to the library, or go to the pool and take advantage of the services that the city is providing its residents. So again, I think that talks a lot about the marketing in particular. When we polled the students about if they were likely to take the city bus, and I think this was the overarching question here, we saw that 71% of students said that they would be, they said that they would be either likely or continue to use the bus anyways, and 29% of students said that they were either somewhat likely or uncertain. We break it down a little bit more in terms of the three cohorts that we just mentioned, and we find that among frequent writers, 94% likelihood of taking the city bus. Infrequent writers, 67% likelihood in taking the city bus. And for non-writers, 37% likelihood in terms of taking? And for non-writers, 37% likelihood in terms of taking the city bus if this program was implemented. And lastly, we asked students about, well, how do you want to, how do you want these bus passes to be distributed? On your current Presto Card or on the Presto Card provided to you? And the reason why was actually one of the questions that our student senators brought up was, well, how is this bus pass actually going to be implemented? And as far as we know, Presto Cards are, act as the current, I guess, bus pass provision, if you will, as of January 1st, 2020. Because the city of Burlington got rid of these, I think, monthly bus passes in year of the actual Presto Card. And so what we found was that 35% of students saying that they want the pass on their current Presto Card, 30% of the students saying that they want the Presto, pass on the card, on the Presto Card given to them. And then 30% of students who said, well, I don't really care, it doesn't really matter because, well, they don't have a Presto Card. And so this kind of discussion with our senators, we discussed a little bit about how there could be duplication of cards. How will these cards be used after one graduates high school? How do you know, how do you replace your card if it gets lost, et cetera? And while we know that, you know, this might not necessarily be the main provision of these bus passes in Burlington, I think it's something to consider. And so we provided some recommendations. I tried my best to follow the input of our student senators as well as the results. They closely aligned with them. And so some of the recommendations that we suggested is that, you know, secondary students, they want to be able to use these bus passes on and off school periods, right? During the summer, as well as allowing students to use them on, on peak and off peak periods, right? So basically 24/7 and allowing them to use during weekday, weekends, weekdays and weekends. Furthermore, we see that there is might be need for more bus shelters, more benches, more, a higher frequency of buses. And that perhaps that the scheduling can be more adapted to the current scheduling for warning bells and dismissal, warning bells and dismissal times. So I think that, to sum everything up, we can pretty much say that most students would be able to take advantage of this and would want to in that sense. But I think that we need to realize eventually that students just, they want to be able to have confidence in the transit system that can meet their commuting needs. So that's kind of the point where transit comes in. And I will mention in the mayor's memo, whereas if the, the goal was to really introduce students to transit so they actually become lifelong writers. If that's the case, then we have to make sure that, you know, as a, as a board and as a key stakeholder in this program, that, you know, the transit service can instill trust in them. That the students can feel confident that their, that the transit service is actually meeting their needs. Because once they graduate from this program, they're going to have to start paying these fares as well. And so ultimately, I think that it's not just, you know, making sure that this program is sustainable, but making sure that we are meeting the needs of our students. We are transforming a system that has now become more robust. And that, I think, as representing our Burlington Secondary Students is ultimately the goal for this. So there is a lot to unpack here, so I'd be happy to take any questions for that.
Before I go on to the questions, I just want to comment on your report. I think it's extremely well done. It's in-depth. Maybe should consider selling it to the city of Burlington. Having said that, you can't because the report now belongs to the board. So I now will move it to the trustees if they have any questions. No questions? Okay, seeing there are no questions, thank you very much, trustee Swan. Yes, so, sorry. Secretary Daly wishes to weigh in on this.
Thank you, through Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank trustee Swan and all three of our student trustees for really reaching out to our student population in a, in a different way maybe than we've done in the past. And it's really commendable how serious that you've taken your role and continue to take your role right up until the end of your term. So thanks very much, trustee Swan, trustee Caratow, and trustee Bambra.
Yes, I echo that. Sorry for not including the other, the other two student trustees. Agenda Item 10.2, Long-Term Capital Progress Update. Superintendent of Financial Services Loffs, can you please share your board, your report with the board?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Staff had hoped to present the Long-Term Capital Plan in the second quarter of 2020, but unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the movement of the Milton Secondary School badly reviewed into April and May, the Long-Term Capital Plan was delayed. Therefore, this report outlines revised timelines regarding the Long-Term Capital Plan presentation. Senior Manager Fred Tivo or myself are ready to answer the rest of the.
Trustees, are there any questions? Agenda Item, we'll move on to Agenda Item 10.3, Long-Term Facility Renewal Strategy. Superintendent Merrick, please provide the board with your department's long-term strategies from 2020 to 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. We're presenting the renewal strategy for the board. So this is an annual update to our renewal plan and looks at investments in board facilities over the next five years. So we have many different data points and items that we feed into this report. We look at the Ministry of Facility Inspection data, that they conduct inspections on all of our sites every five years. We also have board, staff, and consultant-level inspection data that we do annually to identify critical building components and items in need of replacement in our schools. We also have the availability of capital funding that varies from year to year. And we make conservative estimates on the funding that we expect to come in over the next five years to ensure we have funds to cover the projects and shuffle projects around as needed as that funding is realized. We also have our, we feed in our inspected new construction projects that we hope to see over the next five years, so we can do some work balancing. And since we have the same team working on, on both renewal and new capital projects, it's important that we balance that work over the, over the five-year window of the, of the plan. And then we also use the survey data where applicable to try and prioritize projects as, as needed. So with this plan, we prioritize projects and develop the, the strategy. So in our prioritization, we look first at critical infrastructure projects that are in need of replacement to protect our building assets. Then we look at high-return projects. Typically, those are ones associated with incentives. Typically, energy projects typically tend to be very small in nature, but we try and utilize where there's funding and incentives available. We try and tap into those to make the most of those incentives. And then we get into renewal pieces, looking at, you know, first, older buildings and trying to renew and refresh those, those older facilities. And then moving kind of the, the middle-term or newer buildings and renewing those sites as well where needed. So Figure 1 of the report shows the proposed phasing of the projects. On that figure, you'll note that the Summer 2020 projects were already approved by trustees last fall. So those are already in the works for, for this coming summer. And for Summer 2021, we're looking at four projects. So we're looking at continuing the Bishop Running Addition Project and some of the renewal that goes along with that as well. This has already been approved by the board. The St. Christopher School, looking at a new chiller replacement there. So an HVAC project there. And then two renewal projects at Early Field Victory in Milton and St. Joseph's Acton. And we also have some, our board-wide programs we're looking at continuing on with. So we started turf replacement, artificial turf replacement last summer. Looking at continuing that on, starting next summer as well. And then AODA, so accessibility improvements at a variety of our schools. Continuing that program on, as we do each year throughout the plan. And you can follow through the rest of the years through the table there as well. So this report is just for, for trustee information. Staff will be reviewing the, the 2021 projects that are listed on this report to bring back to the board in the fall for approval, as, as we do every year, to bring the, the actual projects and the specifics to them back to the board for approval. And then we'll continue to update this plan again next spring and bring it back to the trustees for information and continue the, the annual cycle. So happy to answer any, any questions that trustees may have on these, on this report here tonight.
Vice Chair Dork, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question to Superintendent Merrick. I had the pleasure of visiting a couple of schools in Oakville and Georgetown. And I did, what first came to my mind is surely these schools need some kind of renewal. And maybe safety features, some safety areas. So my question to you is, how, how often do we determine when the, when we need to do some refresh work and repairs to the school? And who determines that? And, and how do we determine how urgent it is to be, so?
How often do we do a?
Yeah, how often do we do that? Yeah, how often do we do a review of the school and whether we need a refresher, renewal to be done? And sometimes selectively, some staircases got damaged. How do we know when they need to be repaired? And how often do we do that checks, those checks and balances?
So I, I mean, I think it's very important to distinguish maintenance from renewal in this, in this activity. So maintenance, so, you know, a staircase being damaged, we a maintenance item? And that is fixed, especially staircases or safety items, that should be fixed immediately. So we rely a lot on our staff in the schools. So our custodians, our principals, our teaching staff to identify those items, whether it's through a joint health and safety committee or just talking to the principal and they bring it up to our facility managers, and they'll go out and action though. So things like, you know, you know, even like a heating system being disabled or cooling system being disabled, or, you know, faulty stairs or something like that. Those will be brought up immediately, and those will be fixed immediately. And we, we don't bring those to the board. Those are part of maintenance of the building. The renewal we're talking about here is kind of, it's more like a multimillion-dollar overhaul of a building. So looking at, you know, like actually replacing entire HVAC systems, replacing roofing. It could be replacing lockers in the school. So very large-scale things. In any, any project on this list is greater than $250,000, which is the threshold that it must have trustee approval. So those are the ones that we bring here. So we're looking at big overhauls, and those happen, I'll say, on average, every close to 20 years at a school. So every 20 years, you're looking at, you know, a full replacement of the HVAC system. The roof has to be redone, and, and those are the, the things that we're looking at in this report.
Good, thank you.
Vice Chair Dork, do you have a follow-up?
No, no, thank you.
Vice Chair Dork, do you have a follow-up?
No, thank you.
All right, then we'll move on to trustee O'Brien.
Thank, thank you through you, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Merrick. So is construction back full tilt right now with all the sites?
We're getting close to being back to full tilt. It takes a little bit of time to get mobilized again. But we did talk to all of our GCs last Friday. They're all, have the intent to be back up and running this week. So as they recall staff back, there's some, I guess, opening the sites back up again and adjusting to the new COVID requirements on the site. So maybe some retraining of staff. But we're hopeful by, you know, middle of this week. So that's kind of today, tomorrow, Thursday, having all of our sites back up at full steam again and, and proceeding on with the construction.
Thank you.
Is there a follow-up, trustee O'Brien?
No.
Thank you. Trustee O'Hearn Zarnata, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent Merrick, not a big surprise. Just want to make sure of a confirmation of understanding for the paragraph that relates to Holy Cross in Georgetown. So you will keep it on the table for capital projects and see what the ministry does as far as approval, and then deal with it depending upon their decision. Is that correct? Do I have a right confirmation of understanding of that?
That, that's correct. So that was my, my plan with this report, or at, at this current time with Holy Cross. You know, if it comes back that it's not approved for, for rebuild again, I guess, at that time, we did consider as a board whether we want to invest money into it. And, you know, frankly, investing money into it would then, you know, it would basically take the rebuild off the table. So, you know, if, if they were to decide not to fund that project right now, they're basically saying that that project or that school is in, in good enough shape in the provincial context that we don't need to, to replace it. So from that, you can assume that by putting more money into it, it'll just move it further up the list and be less likely we'll, we'll ever get a replacement for it. So, I mean, that's really a decision at a board level to decide whether we want to put money into it and renew it and live with it for a number of years, or whether we want to, you know, we'll continue doing maintenance on it as opposed to renewal and, and go back again and try again for a, a future round of capital priorities to get that rebuilt school.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a follow-up, trustee?
No, no.
My question, what has the, the ministry, when they rate the school, what is the rating, the current rating? In terms of needs, in terms of redundancy, in terms of where did they?
For, for Holy Cross, you're talking?
Yes.
I, I have to go look at it again. It changes slightly every year, and I had all the numbers in front of me right now. But last time I checked, it was just slightly above, above the midpoint. So it'd be kind of 52nd, 53rd percentile. It, it'll be around the 50th percentile again. So in the provincial context, there's, you know, 2,600 odd schools through the province that are in, in worse condition than it. So it's a challenge. It, it may be one of our worst facility condition, but in the provincial scope, it's, it's pretty close to the middle of the pack.
And we get penalized because we look after our schools better than everybody else.
Yeah, so, so part of this report is we factor in the, the renewal dollars that we get each year. And they take into account the condition of your schools going into it and give you money accordingly. We get a lot less than everybody else does because our buildings are in such great shape.
Yeah, thank you. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to Superintendent Merrick. So I'm assuming that this process is very similar to the capital funding request for a new school. But I would assume we have some latitude in where we get funds from. So for example, if the province decides not to fund something that we deem urgent, we, can we use our, our own funds or funds from another bucket, like the chair's expense account or something like that?
You're welcome to it, sure. He's the best.
Yeah, thanks, thanks trustee Murphy. So how this differs from new construction with, with these renewal funds? And there is a section in the report, I think it's probably on the third page or so, where it lists out the, the different categories of funding that we get from the government. Each of those buckets has different strings tied to it and certain things you can and cannot spend the funds on. But one thing that's common for all the funding sources that we talk about in this report, you cannot add GFA or floor area to your building with any of these funds. So adding any new space to any building requires either an approval on a new project or a ministerial exemption to do that. So I think it would have been before the time of this board. But we actually applied for a ministry exemption to add, to do the work, the renewal work and the new addition work at Assumption. It was a fairly lengthy process to get through, but we actually got approval to do that. So they did allow us to use some of our renewal funds for a, a new addition or a small addition at Assumption. But typically, you can't use any renewal funds for, for addition work. So all these funds you see here are reserved for renewal work. We can fix up our, our critical building components, add new programming areas, and do those aesthetic, aesthetic improvements to the building. But you can't add any, any floor space to the, to the school. For that, you have to go through the capital parity process, which we're going through now with a, a number of our, our growth requests and rebuild requests from across the board.
Trustee Murphy, do you have a follow-up?
Uh, no, that's good, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no other questions, so we'll move on to Agenda Item 10.4, Laser FISCH Empower 2020 Conference. Executive Officer O'Hara, can you please provide the board with the information you're bringing back from that convention?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I'm happy to report that there were three staff from our board that were able to attend the Laser FISCH Empower Convention in Long Beach, California from February 11th to 14th. That, as trustees are aware, we did purchase Laser FISCH software, which we are using to update and move our, all of our HR files into electronic format. The, this particular program is very powerful, and we are looking at ways to modernize many of our other processes in human resources and certainly beyond HR. So this gave us an opportunity for myself to see this at a high level. We had one of our employees who's from IT to see it from a more granular level. And also another HR person who was able to see it from a practical perspective in terms of being able to build new forms, which could be electronic and, and. new forms which could be electronic and certainly improve our, our productivity. So again, very good learning that took place. And I'm excited about the possibilities of modernizing the HR department and other departments moving forward. Thank you.
Sorry, are you finished?
Yes.
All right. So are there any questions trustees?
I have one.
Vice Chair Dort, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a question to Executive Officer Dour. So with this new software that we have learned, I believe we should be working more efficiently, right? And if we are working more efficiently, that means we need to think about how we utilize our manpower. Is this something that has crossed our mind?
Again, through the chair, one of the reasons for certainly moving to electronic HR files was as a, as a major result of us having eliminated a file clerk position due to budget constraints in the past. So this is allowing us to be able to certainly fill that void at the same time when we are continuing to grow as an organization. It certainly is our hope that we will be able to continue to create more efficiencies and streamline our processes so that we can continue with growth to be able to keep our complements and not have to increase our complement. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, if there are no more questions, then I'll move on to agenda item number 11. Miscellaneous information minutes. My, my apologies, 10.5. I just missed it. We just discussed that. So agenda item 10.5, bylaw review. Trustee Carabella, do you wish to address this particular item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will read my notice of motion. It's called bylaw review committee. Be it resolved that Resolution P 21 slash 20 from the Policy Committee, which reads that a bylaw working committee be struck involving all trustees, the director of the board and other superintendents as resources to meet a half hour prior to every policy meeting prior to the June 9th, 2020 review of bylaws. A third party will be brought at the agreement of trustees into advise as required. Be brought to the May 21st, 2020 board meeting and establish the working committee reviewing the Halton Catholic District School Board procedural bylaws as an ad hoc standing bylaw review committee comprising all trustees and be approved. And I can, I can send that to Rosie. I can, I have it to send to Rosie.
Thank you. We're done with that particular item. Miscellaneous information minutes have been provided for your information. There's no correspondence. We now have open question period. Are there any questions? There are no questions. May I have a motion?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I couldn't type fast enough. I just had one quick question about the minutes of the CAC meeting.
Go ahead.
Just through you, Mr. Chair, and to Superintendent Cipriano. It notes that you read a poem from a student that in regards to mental health. Would it be possible to share that poem with us and just send us an email? I'd like to see what it was.
So trustee Ohern Zarnata, are you saying it's not in our package?
It's in the minutes that Superintendent Cipriano read out a poem from a student in regards to mental health awareness. I would just like to see what the poem is, that's all.
Very good. So we'll make arrangements to provide that to all trustees. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we were in agenda item 14. We need a motion to move back into camera.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Just, can I just make a comment with respect to trustee Ohern Zarnata's request?
Yes, go ahead. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, just technology. Yeah, so just, I'm sure it won't be a problem at all, but we just, before we make a commitment that we'll share it, I know that Superintendent Cipriano got prior approval from the student to share that poem at the CAC meeting. So we just want to make sure that the student would be okay sharing that with the trustees. So it just, I'm sure it shouldn't be a problem, but I just wanted to make that comment that we did, that he did ask for the permission to go ahead and share that at CAC. We just want to make sure that they're okay with us sharing it. But we can certainly ask, that shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Any, do you have a follow-up question trustee Ohern Zarnata?
No, that's wonderful. We'll dot our i's and cross our t's. I just thought, I'm sure it's wonderful poem. I'd just like to read it, that's all.
Yeah, it really is. It's fantastic and hopefully we'll have the rights, we hopefully will be able to share it because it really was moving.
All right, so then I need a motion to move back in camera. Can I have a mover, please?
I move it.
Moved by trustee O'Brien, seconded by trustee Dort. I will call a vote, simply because it's tough to see who, who is against or who is for it. Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Ohern Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee, student trustee Bambra?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Dort?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien? Trustee O'Brien? Okay, we'll come back to you. Student trustee Caratow?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Going back to trustee O'Brien. Okay, we have a majority. So we're moving back into camera. So we need to exit out of this one and then come back to your.